Microphones are on. Okay, we're live, folks.
I really don't like it.
Last item on the agenda here, and I guess my role's gonna continue as a facilitator today. What I'd like to do is start off by just turning this over to the city manager. He's going to explain really some of the expectations of this item that will help staff and the rest of you. So, Arlene?
So, I think knowing we're not gonna be able, there's been multiple discussions about boards, both internal and external and efficiencies. And so, we asked, one of the requests I had from individually from multiple council folks is that you wanted this to be included in strategic planning. So, what I think our thoughts are here is to have Bob help us facilitate just which ones you would like to specifically workshop. I think an informal discussion amongst you all would be helpful. Do you want to group them, or if there's a consensus already to eliminate one immediately off the table, that's, that's fine too. But we didn't think we'd be able to solve every one of these issues because many of them are complex. Some of them are, multiple ones deal with land use issues, so that might be something you want to clump into one further discussion. But having an informal working group first, because if you decide to eliminate change or review any of these boards or create new procedures for board members, all of that would have to come back in possibly an ordinance change, an admin code change. There, there's many processes to that. Laura has mentioned many times combining of boards. And so, we just, we want to kind of keep that ball moving forward and getting that consensus and then what the next steps are, so.
Thank you, Arlene. It sounds like then the idea is for, staff is looking for some direction as to what you want to do with these boards. And obviously, that's gonna require a separate workshop. I think you're all probably not ready, even if you had the time, wouldn't be prepared to do that.
Maybe.
I can add, I can add a little color to the Councilwoman Carr. I think she's continuing to beat the drum on this, but it was a, a consideration two councils back, that they were looking at combining the Planning and Zoning Board and the Boarding, the zoning board essentially. Combining those two into one. I think that what one, we can't do that at the moment as a result of Senate Bill 250, which has been extended. You can't change new procedures that would, that development would have to come through on up until October 2026. However, one of the other considerations that I think, I believe may have been floated one day was whether when we start putting that together now for the future, would you also want to consider adding any other boards to that that are relating to land use? Historic preservation, you know, so, I mean, because what happened in, I think Astero was the example locally. They had, they combined their local planning agency with their, their Board of Own Appeals with their Architectural Review Committee into one mega board because you have the, the Planning and Zoning Board, or the, our local planning agency, I'm sorry, they're dealing with comp plan issues. They're not doing a lot of comp plan changes. And they're not seeing the projects that come in when they come in the zoning level, when the rubber hits, hits the ground. And having more continuity was an advantage for Astero, that they're all looking at everything, the project from, from, you know, all the way, all the way through to final design. So, is that something that would be positive or not?
I love that. And four that I would just say off the top, from my, in my opinion, that we could at least have a robust discussion on the viability or how we would work with them. I would say to start with a Historic Preservation Board, Chamber of Commerce, Human Services, West Coast Inland Navigation District. If we, and I think there should just be conversation on whether, you know, we have any type of consensus on at least those four to start with.
What were they again?
So, Historic Preservation Board, Chamber of Commerce, which is Southwest Florida Inc., Human Services Advisory Council, I don't even know what that does. And then, West Coast Inland Navigation District. Again, if, if anybody wants to go to bat for those, I'm all about it, but.
Well, they, I think we get a grant from West Coast.
Oh, we get money from them? Okay. All right, take them off my list.
They're off the list. Say no more. That only leaves three.
We don't have, we don't have a seat, but if we're not paying attention, nothing.
They're important.
No, actually, there are volunteers, there were volunteers that were city residents. They were appointed by county there, and then they do annually provide you approximately $40,000 to supplement LCSO funding on the road.
They dredge your channels.
I take that all the way back. I take that all the way back. And Chamber of Commerce, like, I'm the person for it, so I'm not, this is nothing against it. I mean, my issue is this, it used to be Benita, they moved out of Benita, and now they have a little tiny place in Astero. So, like, I have no problem going whenever they decide to have meetings if, if we still like to. But, that said, I don't know, you know, and Historic Preservation Board, we've had, you know, there's, I could, I could give you 10 reasons why that one should be up for discussion as well. And I think most of you who've been here know exactly where I'm coming from on that. So, those, and then, again, Human Services Advisory, who has that full, maybe you love it and I don't know, but.
Haven't had a meeting?
Which is it? What is it?
Human Services Advisory Council?
In 28 months.
Okay, so.
When, when was the last time others had, the crew had a meeting?
Crew, same thing. I didn't, I had that for the whole time, but they never, and he's now, Jim has.
I'm, I'm a crew, I've reached out to Ben Nelson this past week, and, and Bob, the executive director. I have been added to their board meetings, so for now, it's, it's.
They're a viable entity that's part of our community.
It's, it's a vested interest because it sits in my backyard, in my district, and, and from my end, it's just.
If, if I can approach what Jesse said, go back to square one, you guys have heard me say this up there. Standardizing the, the boards and committees that we have and setting certain expectations or qualifications for membership. I know it's tough getting volunteers, but quite honestly, we have certain members of the committee that are members of boards that, what, what are their qualifications and have cost the city money, time, aggravation? And, you know, whether they're viable or not, the fact that the people on those boards are not actually serving the council and the city, which they're supposed to, it's more like a club. And there, there's more than one. So, I'd love to see us standardize one or two sets of qualifications for membership on a board or committee, number one. And the two, I'd really aggressively like to discuss whether we need some of these boards and committees. I mean, why, why do we even have someone that we haven't had a meeting? I think if you haven't had a meeting in a year, why are you, we don't need you anymore. You've outlived your usefulness.
And then this special events committee I'd like to add, because it's hard to get a quorum, folks don't show up, but they also don't do anything, Laura and Carissa and, and Logan do everything. So, even when they, all they do is, like, they do, they have like a, a coffee mat, you know, like, and I'm like, why don't you guys just go across the street and, you know, go to Zorba's or something, because we want to get home.
Yeah, but how, how does staff feel about that?
Well, I, I know a lot of these have kind of, in, in the beginning, it helped out. We were government light, so it was good to have the, you know, these outside people come in and help us out. But a lot of them kind of have outgrown the usefulness. I know with special events, they, it's much more involved now to where we need the people that are actually work for the city to be more involved with it, just because there's just too much going on for, for most of the, the outside committee people. My whole point in bringing this together is I, I do want to see, you know, drop a lot of these committees because it, it is a, a time suck from a, on the staff point. Like, I know Bicycle Pedestrian, we, we have our, you know, master plan now. Yeah, I really don't see much of a need anymore. We can probably, you know, dissolve that. I'm, I'm kind of hearing the same thing with the Historic Preservation Board, Special Events, Street Lighting, and Tree Advisory Board. I, I think there's some things with the Tree Advisory Board, but, but we might be able to roll that into the LPA and.
What, what I'm thinking is if, if we want to move something forward, and part of this is, is to make sure that we also have engagement from the members because when we first started talking about this, we had a lot of members weren't sure if they should renew. We could, we could combine the boards without changing their rules and being in contravention of state, state law, so that it's one group that is serving the purposes of all, all these boards. So, you could, we could roll in LPA, zoning, historic preservation, and tree. We may be able to do that and just have the board, and then they would, we have one meeting, and then they would have, they would serve those roles in the interim if you want to do this sooner than later.
So, we can do that now?
Yeah, I think, because I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be adding a new process, I'd just changing the makeup of the board, which we can completely do.
So, it would just be one smaller, well, one, one board doing all.
The only one that would be an issue would be trees, because they meet more often. But those four are all land use related boards.
An issue with the Arbor Day, National Arbor Day Foundation and Tree City USA and some grant funding, so that's one thing we have.
Same with Historic Preservation, that's why we have.
Can it be separated out so that way the, for permit purposes and stuff, it would fall to the zoning?
I, I would be.
But, but for the, for the other things.
You do have an active tree board, but to separate the duties out, whereas a land use decisions might fall now under.
Right, so the, the, we would have a, call it Land Use Day, and they could meet as the zoning board, and then they could, they could close out that meeting and meet as a tree board to approve something if they wanted to.
That's stupid.
Same people wearing different hats.
Correct.
And that would be temporary. Later on, we could.
And then, and then we try to combine what we need to combine or break out what we need to break out.
I'd like clarification on, since I'm newly appointed to the Historic Preservation Board, and our first meeting was when we were in Tallahassee, and the second one, essentially, I guess, from my end, relevance and actions of that, do we need, do we need some insight from Mike Fieg on attending the last one, or what?
They're a problem. They've always been a problem.
Expect there.
They have, they have consistently.
You don't recognize them though.
They have consistently tried to, whether you're talking, you know, coming to our downtown meeting and trying to stop it because they want to park you, like, there's, whether you're talking the Wonder Girdens and the restaurant issue, or they said they were with us, and then they were, then they changed their mind, and then they came to our meeting, and then they blasted us on the news, like.
Well, now, is that the.
This is historic. This is.
Not the historical society.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're talking Historic Board. Okay, I thought you were getting into, okay, my bad, my bad. I don't, I don't have as much issue with these ones.
We have the 501(c)(3) organization we have nothing to do with. It's a club, period. That's what they, I mean, they're, they're an entity, but they have nothing to do with.
Rudderless ship for that area.
It would, it'd be something that we want to educate the public to, that that.
There's a difference, yeah. There's a confusion.
We have no authority over them. My question on the Historic Preservation Board is, we know from our meetings that the Benito Springs Elementary School, which I believe is the only historically designated building in the city now, has lost, National Registry has lost its, they've already applied and it's been approved, so that's done. What does the Historic Preservation Board do for council and/or the city?
We have to get, we have to hypothetically go through them for, well, now that there's only one place that it would even apply to, so nothing now. Because prior to that, we had to go to them for.
You have a list of locally designated historic structures. And you also have, you have, yes, hi. So, you have a list of locally historically designated structures. You also have a, a non, a demolition delay list as well, separate of that, which requires an application.
So, we have to ask our committee if we can do something.
The property owner has to ask.
We as the property owner, so you're correct, in the process when we're the property owner and a property or a structure is on a demolition delay and/or is on the local list of historic significant places, we do have to ask the committee permission to move forward.
I don't believe in that. I, I don't believe in that.
Mike, how many, how many structures are on that list, approximately?
So, we have about 22 structures that are designated in the city, and it's the boards, one of their responsibilities is to work with these homeowners or the owners of the properties to keep them, to keep the historic significance and also to keep them, you know, well-maintained and things like that. One of the avenues that the board uses for that is line item in the budget for grant funding. So, a lot of times, an incentive that's given to these property owners to say, replace the windows, replace the roof, do what you have to do to keep the structure in good order, is that we can reimburse some of the money that the homeowners spend.
Or the business.
Or, or the business, and sort of, you know, reimburse them for the changes that they've made for upkeeping their historic structure. All that goes through the board for their approval. Anytime you want to make a change to a historic structure, it goes through the board to make sure that the change that you're making is within the spirit of the historic structure and it's not going to lose its significance. So, they do tend to meet regularly for those types of things.
The, the other item I would suggest is because they are a designated board, we are now a certified local government recognized by the state of Florida. So, there is funding opportunities for historic.
Can we keep, can we keep the ability to get the funding without them having any autonomy in regards to how we develop the city?
Only, only if we have the required people on the board, which I don't know that we do.
What defines required?
There's, there's like, you actually have an architect, there's a couple, like, specific people, I don't know that we have them.
So, it, it depends.
We don't have an architect.
It, it, it depends who you ask, for an example, because for example, if you ask the state, which certifies us as the local government, all we have to do is say, hey, we really like to have these members on the board. As long as there's something showing that we've made the effort to put it out there that we want those members, our status isn't in jeopardy.
As long as we advertise we're recruiting certain.
Right. If you look in Chapter Five, which is the historic chapter in Our Land Development Code, oh, well, okay. It's a little more black and white, I suppose, so it depends who you ask.
What if they go away? What happens?
You would, we would lose our status as a certified local government for that aspect, but it doesn't jeopardize the city as a whole. The CLG really is just for historic purposes only. So, you would, you would lose access to potential grant funding and other areas like that.
Historically used them? Have they ever gotten us money?
Historically.
Since I've been a liaison, I don't think they have.
For the good bread. We got money, I think, from the good bread.
No, other than.
City money, not city money.
No, that was from developer.
I'm just, I'm just trying to be, I'm just trying to be clear. If they've never given us any money and they have autonomy that we generally probably would not want them to have, what is the negative to them going away?
Or could they be rolled into?
Or incorporated into Mike's point and Derek's point.
Rolled into the building zone.
Do they lose their powers if that happens? That's my main thing. I don't like the idea, not that they're even going to use it, but I don't like the idea of us having to go to a committee to get permission for anything.
So, so the most important thing when it comes to the land use boards is that you have people who are, have some level of expertise, not necessarily in all areas, but enough level of expertise that they're able to understand, competently review the materials in front of them, and that they act in a unbiased manner in reviewing, in reviewing those materials. They don't get necessarily swayed by anything, but that they are giving you advice, because they're all advisory boards, you know, for, for the most part. They're giving you candid advice that, that can help to educate the commission. So, you know, my, my thought is that by combining them and focusing on trying to get good quality people, making sure that we have a, an educated board that properly reviews things, I think that they could probably cover all those bases. Right now, I think the problem, part, part of the problem is making sure that we have quorums, that we're getting enough people, you know. It's the hard, the more boards you have, the harder it is to get, you know.
If I may ask, Mike, how many current members are there on the Preservation Board?
Six.
And, and that's positions, or do we actually have six people?
We have, we have six people. There are seven slots. We have six of them filled.
One thing I would ask that be part of the discussion of merging and/or training is, is, I would like to put on a table for some discussion during the workshop is train, mandatory training for the boards. Not only mandatory training of Sunshine, which we do annually, but I would ask that they be required to do the same training that our employees do, such as sexual harassment training, all, all of the same requirements. And, and if applicable, possibly the minimum FEMA trainings that we do, so that when they're making these decisions, they're making them based on emergency management. But they are interacting with the public and they are representing you as a city person. So, it, it is important to, many, many jurisdictions require that when they come on as part of the onboarding, that they take certain trainings.
How many do we need?
We need a local planning agency.
How many on the Historic, how many numbers? How many people?
We have six on the Historic Preservation.
How many do you need to have a quorum, like, to be legitimate?
Right now, I think it's, there's seven slots, so your quorum is done based on your seven slots, so you have to have at least four.
Can we reduce it to five?
So, many of your boards within their, their ordinance actually dictate the, the quorum. So, for example, Special Events has a completely different quorum.
Yeah, we'll, we'll deal with that with standardization though.
Is we would need a standardization of the quorum.
Minimum, yeah, lower the numbers and maybe.
I, I think that if you get, if you, you know, I don't know how big the Astero Board is anymore. It's large, but you, you're gonna need five, maybe seven for, for a large board. And the thing about engagement to avoid the coffee club scenario is if they're active and they're doing stuff, which by combining them, they will be active and they will be doing stuff. People feel that they're, they're getting some, something out of their volunteer time, they're, you know, it's, they're gonna, they're, it'd be a different story altogether, I think, trying to recruit people if they had to go through four rounds of training and they only went, met once every 18 months. But if we're, you know, our land use boards, they, they don't even meet every month anymore. We don't have enough activity going on for that. So, by combining them, we maybe, you know, we're saving staff time, we're also saving the volunteers' time by keeping them active, and they get to see things from start to finish, because they'll be involved in every step of the process.
On the Historic Preservation Board, there was a mandatory meeting from the Historic Preservation, saw, you know, people, you know, and somebody came down and got real certificates and he had to go. There were a couple of people in the room that just couldn't quite get what she was saying, because it's impartial. And somebody who really likes trains kept saying, but I don't like it. And she kept saying, it doesn't matter if you like it or not, is it historic? This is how we define it. And you go, and, and she went over the whole thing, three minutes later, I don't like that.
Probably good to merge it with the other zoning and the LPA and doing one mega board, but still seven members.
Probably spend more time on this than we need to.
Yeah.
That, that, I would like to bring up after, you know, my non-elected role of attending both zoning as well as the LPA and so forth. I, I do, I would like to keep, see those separate for one and only one primary reason. It provides a focus on particularly where we look at changing future land uses and that type of stuff in terms of maintaining the integrity of that if it's done. Is there a benefit for the community, not for the developer, but for the community? Two, I see each one of those boards wandering off in different directions, and I've seen both zoning do it, and they're playing architect and design a building, when their decision is can they do it from a zoning perspective? And so, my, first my suggestion, any of these that survive, each one needs to sit down and go through, here is your scope.
And training.
Well, I mean, scope and training, whatever, but at the end of it, they get a sign off that this is it, because this wandering opportunity, it, it, they wander.
That's what started the pro, the conversation about.
I, 100%, the problem, and, and I mean, there was one of these guys that, I don't know, but, you know, he was, this is somebody that I was like, hey, you know what, this would be great. And they can't even get a meeting to happen, because they're sitting there going round and round about procedure and things like that. It's just like, you guys are not here to worry about, they're worried about things that, as you stated perfectly, their job is to ensure that according to how they've written this up, is this, is this compliant with our policy, yes or no?
Yes or no?
Whether you like it, it's not, we think it's a good idea, and, and they have been, that has been explained to them, but they are, they are very resistant to that idea. And it's like, I don't know, knowing the actors on these boards, I don't know if telling them again is going to change anything.
We sign up and we renew them versus saying that this, these two or three people aren't doing their job, and we should just tell them, thank you very much, we appreciate your service, and bring in someone new. Make the hard decision.
How do, well, and what, procedurally, what is our process to do that?
Well, we sign up, just to be honest, we sign up for the, the people that volunteered for another year. Yep, they want to redo it, and we, we all agreed in a consent thing, and, and we did it.
You don't get, you don't get invited, so you say yes.
To fill those positions, so there's an outreach done annually, and there's a.
I mean, but the problem is we can't keep inviting bad actors to the table because they're the only ones available.
And the bad actors don't leave the table.
And they don't leave the table, and then we're like, oh, well, I guess we don't have enough people. Come on back, Joe, even though Joe has been a pain in the ass to staff and all of us forever.
So, I mean, I, I think the, to, to Councilman Fitzpatrick's point, what I, what I have seen over the years is that the LPA wants to be the zoning board and the zoning board wants to be the LPA. So, that, that was the reason why I was suggesting a combination, because then at least they would know what they were doing. Where, where it has the zoning board, you're saying, well, why does your comp plan say this?
But I, I view the LPA is they should be the, the touch point as we go through the seven-year cycle in terms of future land.
Yes, that's their role.
And what has changed, that there are conflicts inherently between zoning and LPA in terms of one is more senatorial in its approach and the other one's more legislative and, and, and more transactional. And, and I think, and I just am very cautious in terms of how we approach, whether it be infill, whether it be out east, whatever. I've just, they're delicate issues that I, I, if, if the people stink, let's be adults, and whoever the representative, representing each one of these people from council makes the review and says, congratulations, I recommend retaining the following three, and the other, let's find replacements for that. Maybe that's three months in advance, and we're polite, and we say, three months down the road, congratulations, we appreciate your support and volunteering, and fill them.
Maybe, maybe the solution to, to, for this purpose is maybe we need to add a local, our land use boards as a workshop item, where we can present what each of their roles are and, and, and get feedback, and then we can take that feedback back to the boards, and if direction is still to move forward with combining, we can, we can look at variations of that.
That's perfect, yeah.
Which circle land use boards have you defined?
I think what we have to do.
It's the four. It's tree, it's, it's historic, it's zoning, and it's, it's LPA. So, it's four.
It's all four. The tree, zoning, LPA, and what's the other?
And historic or preservation. Anyone who's dealing with property rights, it's going to be one of those.
And that's not unusual to have them combined like that.
I think it's a solution. I don't, I don't, I don't know that there is maybe another model exactly like it, but I think this is kind of like, we set our priorities.
Hearing examiner is the other model, which is you keep your LPA and then you move everything else to a hearing examiner. So, you have essentially a judge making a decision. That's the, that's the, that's what the county does, that's what keeps calls moved to.
Oh, we don't want that, because the judges need training themselves in terms of land use.
Stayed out of this great discussion. I don't want to get in the way of it. But I think we may be at the point of, I, I heard of the boards as a workshop item, combining those four, is that?
Well, well, I think we just do a workshop on those four boards and alternatives. In fact, we have some alternatives to present when we do that.
At the same time, we could go through the external boards and get rid of officially, like, or are we officially getting rid of them?
The ones that you guys have mentioned, the only one I have down for termination was what, by, by?
Those are internal.
The one that I've never met.
So, you have the exter, you have the internal land use boards, and then you have the internal boards, which maybe you want to discuss, and then you have the external boards.
Okay, so, I know we don't do motions, but Human Services Advisory Council, they haven't had a meeting, like Nigel just said. Chamber of Commerce, they've left Benita, and West Coast, no, and we're keeping West. So, those two at least, at those two at, at a minimum, and does Blue Zones do anything, who's, who's the Blue Zones? Is, is that another one that it's like, what are, what are we doing with that?
One meeting when I first took office and, yeah.
That should be on the listing.
I ruined it for them, that's correct.
Blue Zones, Chamber of Commerce, Human Services Advisory Council, I think all three of those can go away and we're all the better for it.
And we're saving staff time.
Yes.
You won't be able to make that decision today, so you're proposing that that be.
And then brought back.
Brought back as an agenda item?
Yes.
For a future meeting, not a workshop?
No, well, for a meeting, not for a workshop.
Okay. Anything else with workshop items other than what the city attorney recommended for tree, zoning, LPA, and historic?
Well, establish, establishing requirements or.
Standardization.
Qualifications for being a member. And then, how do you all feel about term limits? I mean, isn't it ridiculous that we actually had a chairman of the urban public places board for 18 years? Well, 17, actually, I skipped a year. But, you know, seriously.
And we get rid of the Special Events Committee, just done.
I don't know, how much did that person donate?
That's a different point.
Are we in agreement at that? All right, time to conclude this meeting, but are we in agreement that Special Events Committee goes away?
Well, we, we have to talk about it.
Should be part of the work.
But that should, but we're in agreement that we want to.
Yeah, that'd be on the list.
Discuss it.
What if, what if a workshop, a separate workshop on? What if, what if a workshop, a separate workshop on, um, role, roles, responsibilities, and efficiencies, we call it efficiencies, so we can see where.
Qualifications.
Qualifications and efficiencies, so we can see where, um, staff role is different than committee role, we can.
But that's just for the qualifications, for the.
Right.
But for the purposes of these committees that may or may not continue to be involved, that would just be, we would just put that on the agenda.
Okay.
You guys can vote on it.
But for the purpose of workshops, though, workshop discussion of the tree, zoning, LPA, and historic, what, how, how do we put those together, maybe as one?
Just the land, land use boards.